Good evening. We call the meeting the Edina Planning Commission for October 12, 2011 to order. I note for the members of the commission and for the public that we have a slightly, we have a new agenda from the one that was in your packet. There are a couple of additional items included in this agenda. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Plaidler.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Kier.
Here.
Commissioner Stock.
Here.
Commissioner Forrest.
Commissioner Roth.
Here.
Commissioner Chirkelsky.
And Chair Grabel.
Here, thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of, approval of the meeting agenda which you all have. Are there any additions to the agenda? In addition to the items, I would call to your attention that we will be talking about moving the October 26 meeting to November 11. And also, the Assistant City Manager, new Assistant City Manager for the City of Edina, Karen Kurt, will be here later in the meeting and she will address the group briefly and introduce herself. So, any other items to add to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the consent agenda, the minutes of the meeting of September 28, 2011 are in your packet. Are there any corrections, additions, changes, and so on to those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes, to file the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair, I'll abstain since I wasn't present at that meeting.
The minutes are approved. Next item is community comment. Residents are invited to share new issues or concerns that haven't been considered in the past 30 days and which are not formally slated for future consideration. Are there any individuals from the community who wish to address the commission on any Don't be shy. Okay, thank you. There are no items for community comment. We're going to move to public hearings. And the first item on the agenda for public hearings is Matter B-11-09, assign area variance for Fairview-Southdale Hospital at 6401 France Avenue South. Carrie?
Whoops, I need a minute. Thank you Chair Grabel, members of the commission. Before you is a sign size variance request from Southdale-Fairview Hospital. They're requesting a variance of 236 square feet to relocate and replace an existing wall sign. I'm sure you're all familiar with the location of Southdale-Fairview Hospital on France and the crosstown. They have an existing wall sign that's located right here that faces the crosstown, faces north, that has been there since 1970. They received a variance to install that sign. The code requires wall signage, in this instance, in this zoning district, the regional medical district, at 80 square feet. That sign is 249 square feet. The request before you, this is a look at that existing sign. It's located up here, facing crosstown. The request is to install a 316-square-foot sign that would be located right here, again facing north. There have been a number of variances that have been approved for signage out on this There's a monument sign in this location here, there's a wall sign along here for the University of Minnesota Heart Physicians Building, and there's three monument directional signs. Those were all approved in 2001. At each time, the Zoning Board of Appeals found that the hospital is a unique use in the zoning district and is unlike your typical medical facility in that zoning district, and that's been the basis for granting those variances. Staff concurs with that same thinking in this instance. The proposed sign is in proportion to the wall as indicated on the graphic here, provides maximum visibility for emergency vehicles as they travel back and forth along the crosstown. They're able to spot that. So therefore, staff believes that the request is reasonable and recommends that the Planning Commission approves the variance subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Carpenter?
Carrie, aside from the examples of the signage that's being proposed now and the pictures and the stuff that we've provided in our materials, is there anything that provides an example of what the sign might look like if it was conforming as opposed to non-conforming?
We did not run that. It would be limited to 80 square feet, would be pretty small in size. I would venture a guess it would be something along the lines of maybe just the hospital and maybe half of the Southdale sign. It would be pretty small.
Okay.
Other comments from, other questions of staff? Thank you, Carrie. Would the proponent care to make a presentation, please? Identify yourself, name and address, and tell us your story.
Good evening. My name is Rick Ferraro from Spectrum Sign Systems. We're located at 9278 Isandy Street in Blaine, Minnesota. We are part of the team that is representing the signed variance request for Fairview-Southdale Hospital. Mr. Rob Grooman, the Vice President of Facilities and Operations, is also present here tonight and is available to answer any questions pertaining to the hospital. I guess I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Teague has mentioned here and also provide some additional information with regard to the variance request. The new proposed sign and the size and location of this sign are essential to the visibility of this regional and emergency medical facility. The current sign font and the location of the sign are extremely difficult to read from Highway 62. The current font no longer represents the Fairview brand standards, so it is out of compliance. The hospital receives feedback on a regular basis that the sign is extremely difficult to read from Highway 62, which means patients and visitors that are new to this area aren't able to identify while they're on the crosstown highway that this is where the facility is located. And I think we could all agree that in an emergency situation, the visibility of this building is extremely important. The proposed sign is internally illuminated, internally LED illuminated. There are no exposed light sources. We are proposing to use a day/night diffuser, which means that during our daylight hours, the sign characters will appear black as shown in your packets, and that at night it will illuminate white. Now, that is uniform and consistent with the current UMP heart sign. We believe that given the background color of the building, this will provide us the best visibility for both day and nighttime viewing. The overall size of the sign, including the character heights and the font selection, are critical components to the visibility of the sign. We certainly, as sign professionals, would not recommend anything smaller for this size elevation or for the fascia. I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to present this information, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions of the proponent? Thank you. Commissioner Forrest?
When I look at the screen here with the illustration that's been in our packet as well, the one thing that jumps out at me is Fairview and the Fairview logo, which I understand completely, but what is most crucial is the word "hospital." That's what people need to be able to see. Sure, on a day-to-day basis, it's good advertising, but to meet the criteria that you're saying it needs to meet as far as being easily visible in case of an emergency or for people who are new to the community, I think the emphasis is a little bit misplaced. That's pretty much it.
Other questions of the proponent? Commissioner Fisher?
I'm assuming, you said that it's, you wouldn't recommend anything smaller, and I would agree. I'm assuming you wouldn't recommend anything bigger in that location either. I mean, you can't really, and I'm not speaking to Commissioner Forrest's comment, but in general, in terms of the locations that would be most visible to the crosstown, I'm assuming that's it. And you've only got so much of a, what is, do you know what the vertical band is between or above those windows?
The fascia height is seven feet.
Seven, between the top of the window and the...
Correct, and the top of the roof. So, when you're viewing anything that's elevated, that background is extremely important for the visibility of the sign as well, otherwise you would be looking up into the sky.
Right, right. I mean, it looks, proportionately, it looks right on the building as well.
Other questions of the proponent? Would you care to respond to Commissioner Forrest's comment on the relative size of the words, Fairview being the most prominent and hospital, which is what you want the public to see, being relatively smaller?
What I would say to that from a design perspective is that the proposed sign is compliant to the Fairview branding guidelines. There is a certain ratio that is required that we follow when displaying the logo Fairview along with the naming of a facility.
So, did you make the hospital as large as you wanted and then so therefore Fairview had to be larger?
No, sir, we did not. We tried to find a balance to ensure the visibility of all the characters placed on the building.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Forrest?
Well, again, it's a comment, and I think it looks nice, but considering the situation that a variance is being sought, it seems to me that there, I don't know this yet, I mean, we haven't discussed this at all, just be aware that there may be some compromise regarding their branding, their publication standards, things like that, so.
Commissioner Fisher?
Maybe I should just ask the question, just because there's a concern. The word "hospital" in the new version, how does it compare to the word "hospital" in the old?
Good question.
Do you know? I mean, you might not know.
I don't know that there were branding standards when the sign was installed back in 1970. There were logo standards. Perhaps Mr. Grooman could speak to that point a little bit better than I could.
And I'm not saying, I don't have an issue, I'm just trying to see if there's a, you know, if it's actually bigger than what was there before, or maybe it's less of an issue, I don't know.
Would you like me to address those?
Sure. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Rob Grooman. I am the Vice President of Operations and Facilities for Fairview-Southdale Hospital. My business address is 6401 France Avenue at the hospital, and my residential address is 4205 Duke Drive in Minnetonka. Couple of things responding to both of those is that if you look at the diagram, I think the question from Commissioner Fisher was, how does the word "hospital" today relate to the size of the way the hospital is up there? Actually, the dimension is just slightly larger, but it's the position off of that, the size of the letters and off of the fascia of the penthouse, the elevator penthouse there, being more out towards 62 that really is the dominant factor here in being able to see it. But to give you the exact thing, it's probably just a few inches bigger than the word "hospital" and the brass letters at the top of the hospital. And then to the question from Commissioner Forrester, we sort of wrestled with lots of different sizes trying to figure out, to try to maintain the hospital standards in terms of our branding standards. And you're exactly right, getting that word "hospital" as big as it could be without making the proportions on the top of the parapet there seem out of place. We do have these standards that we have to comply with. Our thought was that we got the word "hospital" big enough, we actually went and looked from the other side of the freeway, sort of drove the freeway, thinking about the size of that, and we had to sort of imagine that. But also, we thought by having the word "hospital" at the very end, as you come along, you're driving west on 62, it will be dominant enough on there and off of that fascia of the penthouse, so we think it'll be highly visible, and we'll get the word "hospital" out there and be very visible. It's a balance act, as you well suspect, so. Any other questions?
Any other questions of the proponent? Commissioner Plaidler?
Just a quick one on the sign you're removing. I'm assuming you're going to paint that over or something so the old letters aren't ghosted in or that's all gone away.
Yeah, actually, yeah, actually, up on the penthouse, the elevator penthouse there, all of those letters are actually mounted on a great big panel. That panel will come down, and we'll make sure that that fascia all has one uniform look on it. I don't know how much repair work we'll have to do, but we'll do whatever repair work and then make sure it all looks the same. So what you see in the second rendering there, that's our intent is to have it all look one big block. Yeah.
Other questions of the proponents? Thank you, Mr. Grooman, thank you, Ms. Ferraro.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here this evening who would wish to discuss this issue? Seeing none, excuse me, seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's bring the matter up here for discussion. Further comments and discussion by the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Staunton?
Question for Carrie. Is the, is the sign area standard unique to the regional medical district, or is this the same sign area standard that we might have elsewhere in commercial areas, including the Southdale area?
Commissioner Staunton, it is unique to the, to the regional medical district.
There was something you said in your presentation, something about this isn't kind of your ordinary medical building, and that was part of the justification for the variance. It kind of strikes me that it is. And I'm, I don't think there's any reason to not have it. It looks like it fits, it looks like it's the right size, it fits the building, it's in proportion. What I'm getting at is I wonder if, you know, we're going to run into this in other buildings. So, like, when we did the orthopedic clinic, did they need a variance on their sign?
They would. As I look into the code, it's regional medical and the planned office district, so they're grouped together. So it's, the standards are the same for this district and the planned office district. So we thought it unique from your office zoning district.
So do you recall whether the orthopedic building that we approved...
The Twin Cities Orthopedic?
Yeah, did it need a variance for the sign?
It did, and they received variance.
For the same reason, right? I mean, big building and it's a proportionate sign.
Correct.
I guess all I'm saying is that, I don't have an objection to variance on this, I just think it, we're going to probably continue to run into this because medical office buildings tend to be larger and if it's in proportion, I, I mean, I don't have any, there's nothing that I object to about the size of this, but...
Commissioner Fisher?
I guess, going back to what Commissioner Staunton was saying, I mean, I do think as you went on and made your point, it makes a lot of sense, but your initial comment is you don't see how this is different than other buildings in the district. And I would say, for sure, it's different in that almost any other building, if it's medical office or clinic or whatever, you've got an appointment, you're coming, making your visit. I mean, there might be urgent care, but I mean, this is a hospital, it's got an emergency room, and, you know, where every minute is a life-or-death kind of minute. To me, that's the primary reason I would grant a variance for this. But you actually hit on a really important point that gets to maybe a different ordinance discussion for later for us, is do we have a different standard? Should we have a different standard in a district that has really large buildings? Because a tiny little sign that makes sense on a two-story building isn't going to make sense on a, you know, a larger building. So, I don't have any issues with this variance request for the reasons that it's a hospital, but I do think it might be worth bringing up later in an ordinance discussion.
Commissioner Shear?
One other item that I recall from the discussion about the orthopedic building, which I find compelling in this case as well, is it's a little tricky getting off the highway as you approach either of these buildings, and you don't want to miss your exit. And I think as we, as I recall, we discussed part of the approval in the orthopedic building, and as this demonstrates, this is a safer sign for motorists coming from both directions in terms of visibility and ability to make that turn off in time and not barrel on past. That other one was receding, it was at an angle, part of it is obscured because of the height of the building when you're down low on the highway. I think this really addresses a lot of those issues.
Other comments of the commission? Mr. Forrest?
It's another editorial comment. I will say that when I, I've found, when I've wanted to go to Fairview either to visit somebody or, or to the emergency room, once I get off the highway, it gets a little confusing. So, please keep that in mind in the future, because once you get off, it's like, okay, which way do we go? Where can I park? And so I like the idea that this is highly visible and that people will see it from day-to-day and identify where a hospital is, but, like I said, that's just an editorial
Other comments? Mr. Plaidler?
Just looking at this again, can you actually see this from eastbound crosstown? I guess I'm looking at the aerial and I'm wondering if...
You wouldn't be able to...
...you sign on the other side of the building as well? On the, I believe it's on the northeast face, and I'm looking at the northwest face of the white T area there. Does it, can you see that sign from, from crosstown eastbound?
This particular sign would be seen from going east, or, excuse me, going east to west. And then on the west end of what we call the west expansion, which is the building that was actually added on in 2001.
Oh, okay.
Now, there is a sign there already. The reality, just to be very honest about it, is that with our parking ramp and with the TCO building there, that sign that you were looking at in the packet there is not as visible as we would like it to be. So we are, to Commissioner Forrest's point, we're looking at assessing our whole site in terms of directional once you get off the freeway. We do know that we have some issues there, so we will be addressing that over time. But right now, our critical thing, if you look at the vast majority of ambulance traffic and what we're hearing, because I'm the guy that gets all the calls from patients coming to our hospital that has, have a difficult time finding the location, most all of that ambulance traffic, and most all that guest traffic is coming in a westerly direction. And so that's really what's driving this sign right now, the importance of this one.
Commissioner Staunton?
Mr. Grooman, maybe you are familiar with this, I can't, and maybe other commissioners, there must be signage on the freeway. Isn't there hospital signage or directional information on non-private property, on the rights-of-way, et cetera?
Right, at several locations, over as far as Highway 100, down in the direction of 35, there are the blue hospital signs, blue H's. Those are attached to various road signs. Are there enough or not? I don't know.
Right.
But there are several, as you approach the hospital, there are.
But going to Commissioner Forrest's point, I mean, perhaps there's also a cooperation with, whether it's Mindot or the county, or whoever, you know, with France Avenue, with the county. And I don't know off the top of my head how that signage gets done. I'm sure there's very specific protocols and standards for our...
Very, yes, and the protocols are interesting.
Somebody knows what they are.
Yes, yes. And when you find that, somebody call me, because I'd like to know. I've talked to many people, and I'm just, I've not quite found the right person yet.
Well, good luck with that.
Thank you. I'll need all the luck I can get.
Other, other comments by the commission? Is there, the proposal before us then is to grant a sign variance, site sign variance to Fairview-Southdale Hospital as detailed in the report. Do we have a motion on that matter?
Are we all just shy, or what?
I'm not going to make the motion, because I'm the chairman.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommendation, with the findings, one, that the proposal meets the required standards for variance, that the variance is reasonable since the wall sign, well, do I have to read this all?
Sure.
It's in the staff report.
Okay.
Do I have to read it?
Yeah, I was afraid it was going to make you do it.
I agree with the whole staff recommendation, both items one and two with A and B under one.
So there's been a motion made to approve the proposal based upon the staff report and the findings therein. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There is a second. Any other discussion? Commissioner Forrest?
I would like it if we could clarify the practical difficulties. I mean, we have the unique circumstance, but it would be nice to have practical difficulties, you know, delineated, and I think one of my suggestions might be the positioning of the building, because it is at an angle to the freeway that the increased size maybe is appropriate for that reason, but...
Would the maker of the motion include that as, as part of the motion that the practical difficulty is because of the configuration and situation of the building?
Yes, I would add that, and just make note that the staff had articulated some of the practical difficulties, but I like the clarification from Commissioner Forrest.
Okay, will the seconder accept that? Thank you. Work with me here, people. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is adopted, you've, we've approved your variance request. There is a two-week waiting period and an appeal period. Otherwise, go forth and sign. The next item on the agenda, item number B-11-10, side yard setback variance for Corin and Andy Nelson, 4809 Rutledge Avenue, Edina, Minnesota. Chris?
Thank you. The subject property is located at 4809 Rutledge Avenue. It is on the east side of Rutledge as highlighted. It is a store, one and one-half story home with a detached garage. If you can see it. This would be the existing front elevation of the home. It's a one and one-half story home from the front. From the back, it's a two-story home. It has a detached garage along the south part of the property. This is the home to the north. What you'll notice is that there is a detached garage and a driveway between the south wall of the, of the home to the north and the subject property that's to the south. And this is the house that's directly south at 4813 Rutledge. And again, there's a driveway and the detached garage that's on the subject property between this home and the side wall, the south side wall. this home and the side wall, the south side wall of the home in question. Here is a survey showing the existing conditions on the property. As you can see, the house, it's a, it's a nice-sized lot, however, the house has been pushed very close to the north lot line. The closest point of the home is towards the back, it's 4.8 feet away from the north lot line. The front corner of the house is actually 6.7 feet away, so as you go further back into, towards the back of the lot, the side wall of the house does keep getting closer to that back lot line. The property owners are requesting an 8.1-foot north side yard setback variance to increase the height of their one and one-half story home. The footprint of the home will stay the same. They would like to simply add to the height of the building. They're not going to be changing any of the conditions in terms of site coverage. The survey indicates the setbacks to the home relatively close to the north lot line. There's plenty of room to the south, however, they do have their driveway and their garage located south. The, the home is currently non-conforming regarding side yard setback, both in terms of location and height. The minimum side yard setback for this property would be 10 feet, plus 6 inches for each foot average. The wall height exceeds 15 feet, and it's, it's probably 18 feet in height currently. They would like to increase it to a full second, two stories, so that the second floor would be an average height of about 20.8 feet. This is the proposed new front elevation. They're also going to be improving the garage to match the new look of the home. This is the south elevation, and what you'll notice is that there's a two-story element. This is, the south elevation is much deeper in the lot than the north elevation. This is a portion of the house that is towards the south of the, of the lot, and this is the portion that is requiring a variance. They're keeping the gable look on the side. What it'll look like from the side is the shed dormer with the gable, and then an increase in height towards the front in order to capture more living space on the second floor. The subject property is 10,740 square feet. The existing home was built in 1947, and predates the current side yard setback requirements, and is much closer to the side yard than currently allowed. The proposal is to construct a two-story addition while maintaining a detached two-car garage with the finished materials to include fiber cement, horizontal lap siding, cedar frame columns with aluminum fascia and soffit system. This would be the rear elevation, the first floor, which really isn't changing at all, except they're going to be rearranging spaces on the inside. And then, on the new second floor, there'll be, there are opportunity to capture more space above the footprint that exists on that second floor currently. This is a drawing that their contractor did, showing a conforming solution, which they don't care for how it looks, and in addition to that, this would be the north elevation of that same drawing. It doesn't provide the living space that they need in order to accomplish their goals. The primary issue is the proposed development reasonable. Staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district, and complies with all of the requirements. Setbacks will not change, and the conditions on the property will not change. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot, and the improvements will enhance the property and not detract from or impact the neighborhood. The new home is actually much smaller by ordinance standards than it could be. It's actually about 18 percent lot coverage, and they could certainly have more lot coverage for the size of the lot. They're not changing the lot coverage at all. The improvements will provide additional living space without changing conditions on the property. Conforming solution would, will not provide the homeowners with the adequate space that they need. And the home will maintain the character of the neighborhood and will remain the same with the exception of that enhanced second story. Is the proposed variance justified? Will it relieve practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use? Staff believes the proposal, variance is reasonable. The required side yard setback will not change, and spacing between the subject home and the home to the north will remain the same as well. The practical difficulty in their situation is that the further you go back into the lot, that north wall keeps getting closer to the side yard. It's only 4.8 feet away now. It really practically cannot get any closer than that. They will have no opportunity really to go back further into the rear yard. They would have to jog it in quite severely in order for it to, to work, and their intent isn't to add to the footprint of the building. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to similarly zoned properties? The unique circumstances is the original non-conforming placement of the home, limiting the design options. And will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No, the proposed addition will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and the setbacks will remain the same. Staff recommends approval of the variance, subject to the survey date stamped September 26, 2011, and the building plans and elevation dates stamped August 8, 2011. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions of staff? Thank you. Would the proponent care to make a statement? Please come forward, give your name and address.
I'm Andy Nelson. I'm here, in 4809 Rutledge Avenue, pardon me. My wife, Corin, is in attendance, and the builder, Mike Fritz, from M&amp;M, I don't remember if I got this right, Home Contractors, excuse me. So, appreciate your time. You know, we, we did an analysis on trying to conform to the existing zoning, and what we found is that there's three things, really. One is that structurally, that north wall is a load-bearing wall, and to move it in significantly would be very cost-prohibitive. It's economical on top of that, in that if we had to move in eight feet, our house is only 36 feet wide. To move it in eight feet would mean that we would lose close to a quarter of the upstairs living space. And aesthetically, the revised plans, we feel like were probably not fitting of the neighborhood, and then, on top of that, not necessarily appealing. The current design, again, as was touched on, you know, it stays within the existing walls. We're not looking to add or enhance the footprint of this home. It would also allow us to bring other elements of the home up to code, i.e. the plumbing and the stairs. We have an old attic stairs that we use today, that's pretty steep, where it's going to allow us to actually bring it into code. It would also help us in eliminating some current issues that we have with the north side of our house. We have severe ice dams every year. We have a hand-built roof that has some old insulation in there, and the last, last year it was severe enough that we had to replace drywall on the main level of our house due to ice dam. It keeps with the, the look of the neighborhood. We feel like it's a very strong fit with the neighborhood. And just economically, this alternative provides the square footage, and also, it's most cost-efficient use of the space. Finally, we went through, and we actually asked all neighbors to sign, we walked through the design with them, particularly the neighbors on the north side of our house, and they have signed the attached documents. In addition, we have a neighbor that wrote a letter in support. So, with that, appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Are there questions of the proponent? Commissioner Forrest?
I'm the question person tonight. When you, the, your comments in the application state that it's already two-story elevation in the rear. What is the difference between the proposed peak height of the roof, and what's currently the peak height of the roof?
The main, and Mike may be able to help better, but the main thing about replacing this roof is that it was hand-built, ham-framed roof. To put a new roof, almost all roofs are engineered roofs today, and in order to do that, it's not by design. It's just from a practical build perspective, engineered roofs would add an extra three feet, or 2.8 feet to the house. Did I get that right?
Yep. Where the bearing walls, existing bearing walls are, that we can use a room-and-attic truss system to expand them out to the main level, where we have the, this, existing second story is pushed back on a hand-frame application, so once we eliminate that, we'll remove that upper roof system, and then we can step it back, moving the room-and-attic trusses in there. So, by doing that, with today's engineering on today's trusses, we're going to increase about three feet on elevation. Still keeping it at a seven pitch. Right now, there's some five and six pitch, and we're going to go with five on the shed dormer out the back, and the main roof would be at a seven. So, it's increasing it about one pitch, one inch for every 12 inches, as we increase with these common trusses.
So, then, to sum it up, it's just less than four feet difference in peak roof height from the original?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's about three, four, eight.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Other questions of the proponent?
I noticed one of the alternate designs creates a lot of roof.
Yeah. It absolutely does.
Looking on the north side. And I, I would, I would note for the record that to the north is, it looks like a garage and a driveway.
Yes. That is our neighbor's garage and driveway.
Other questions of the proponent? Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you very much.
The rest of the public left. Would anybody else wish to comment on this? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any comments, discussion from the commission? I'm sorry, Commissioner Forrest?
Once again, I would like it if we could identify practical difficulties in our findings, and in this situation, I would say that its current position on the lot is already far out of compliance, so to do anything at all, pretty much would require moving an entire wall. And also, the shape of the lot has some effect on how the house lines up with the property boundaries.
Thank you. Other comments of the commission?
I thought the applicant did a terrific job of articulating the, you know, real facts in the application and in the narrative that make the case for practical difficulties. I mean, I think this is a classic situation where you want to grant a variance to make this house more usable, and it was on the site before the regulations were imposed, and, you know, short of turning it on the site, you gotta work with what you got.
Right. This is a, this has been a nice presentation. Okay, excuse me. I would note, we had, once a year, the planning commissions of Edina, Richfield, and Bloomington get together for a meeting and talk about what's going on in various towns, various locations, development efforts, and that type of thing. And one of the things, it was this last Monday, I guess, and one of the things that was mentioned in that meeting from Richfield is their ordinance, baked into their ordinance, is permission to do this kind of stuff, rather than requiring a variance, for example, to build, go from a one-stall garage to a two-stall garage, and that type of thing. They want to encourage people to, to make improvements to their homes so people stay in Richfield. And this is a perfect example, I think, of, you know, making improvements to a home, making it a nicer place and enhancing the neighborhood. So, I just make that comment in passing. Other comments of the commission? Is there a, is there a motion?
I do have a comment.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Carpenter.
Just, the one other thing that I would add, as we're looking at practical difficulties, is what was mentioned previously, the relative proximity of the garage to the north, to the, to the boundary line of the property, also, I think, minimizes the impact on the identity of homeowner. Otherwise, you end up with the situation where you can almost take this type of example and put it on any number of situations that we've seen, and would almost automatically just generate that, a variance. So, I think I would add that in terms of findings as a, as a distinguishing factor.
Other comments? Is there a motion? I won't make you read the whole thing.
I would move to approve.
On the basis of the staff report, findings contained in that report, and the comments with respect to practical difficulties that have been expressed by members of the commission.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, excuse me, Commissioner Fisher?
Just, are we adding the practical difficulties from Commissioner Forrest and the...
Right, yes. That was, that was my understanding, Commissioner Forrest's comments and Commissioner Carpenter's comments. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion is approved, your variance is approved. Again, there's a two-week waiting period, so you're wise to wait for that. Thank you for a very fine presentation, we appreciate that, and go forth and build. The next item on the agenda is issue 2011-0011-11A, a lot of elevens there. PUD rezoning and preliminary development plan for DJR Architects. Carrie, would you wish to address that, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Grable, members of the commission. This was a request, this was the project that we reviewed as a sketch plan a couple of months ago, you may recall. It's the ticking down of the gas station at 70th and France, and building and, and office/retail building. Plans came in, it showed a 6,000-square-foot building. They've, since, would like to increase the size of the building up to a little over 8,000 square feet, and that brought into play a number of parking issues. So, that we're doing a parking study. They need to reveal some of the uses that they're proposing there. So, some more issues to go through. So, we're requesting that the commission continue this to the November 9 meeting, and this is a good opportunity to talk about, our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 26th. However, that same evening, we have scheduled a Grand View Small Area Plan meeting that, that evening. So, rather than have the conflict between those two meetings, we would suggest that we cancel that meeting, so the planning commission has the opportunity to attend the, the Grand View meeting. So, with that, I can turn it over to the commission for discussion on that issue.
Commissioner Fisher?
Well, I would just clarify, it's not just any old Grand View meeting, it's, well, actually, it's, I mean, there's a big public component as well, correct, Kevin? I mean...
Yeah. You want to?
No. No, you're the man.
Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, I apologize for the conflict that's developed, but we, as you know, have been working on a small area planning process for the Grand View District, and that process has been underway for this, this most recent version of the process for several months, and we have held one public workshop, one community workshop, and we are coming up on a second community workshop, which will be held in three days at the end of the month, the 25th, 26th, and 27th of October. That's a Tuesday, a Wednesday, and a Thursday. We will have the first two days, the 25th and 26th, will be at the Hughes Pavilion at Centennial Lakes, and then the third evening, the 27th, Thursday, the 27th, will be at the Senior Center next to the library. We had great difficulty trying to find place and time and, and thread the needle to make sure that we found three days together, and so this is where it ended up being. And given that we have two planning commission meetings a month these days, it was a little hard to miss a planning commission meeting when we were going to do three meetings in the middle of the month. So, I did speak with Carrie about that yesterday, and I understand that he visited with you, Mr. Chair, and, and you had some discussions about that to see what the agenda was like, and I think it would be a good thing if we could not have both meetings on the same night. I would love for as many of the planning commission members as possible to attend and participate in as much of the workshop as they can, and we're looking forward to it. For those of you who haven't been involved in the process, we're actually, after much process, we're actually getting to the point where we've got some, some graphics that the consulting team has... the consulting team has recommended in terms of just framework options, and we're going to start to fill in some of those details. And we're looking for members, not only of the Planning Commission, but of the public, to come and join us, and we've got a lot of different ways for folks to plug in and hopefully give us their input, and we'll, we'll move closer to a more detailed plan that we hope to present to the council by the end of the calendar year.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Stotan. Yes, I did discuss this particular issue with Carrie, and we decided it would be a good idea to move, to cancel the meeting of the 26th and take up the agenda items on the 9th. Since everyone has that date on their calendar already, you might find it very worthwhile and interesting to attend the Small Area Plan Study on the 26th, so we thank you for that. The issue that we do, if there's no objection to, to canceling the meeting for the 26th, we will do that as we discussed, Carrie. The issue that is before us is, can we take some official action to move the, the 6996 France Avenue issue to the 9th? Would you like to have a motion to that?
Just one question for Carrie. Where does it put us on a, are we okay on a 60-day or 120-day or any of that business?
Yeah, it's going to require us to extend the first 60 days to 120, so staff will take care of that.
Okay, and we can do that unilaterally?
We can.
Okay. In that case, I'll make a motion to continue it to the 9th of November.
Second? Any other discussion on that issue? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. That takes us through the public hearing items. We'll move into reports and recommendations. Excuse me. And at this point, I would like to introduce to the commission and to the, all of you out there in TV land, Karen Kurt, who is the Assistant City Manager of the city of Edina, who is here tonight. And Karen, if you'd like to come forward and tell us about what's going on with the city and...
Thank you, Chair Grable, and commission members. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I want, I've been taking some time to introduce myself to all the boards and commissions, because one of my new tasks as Assistant City Manager is to sort of oversee our board and commission process in a general sense, and part of that is, of course, making sure that you, as volunteers, have a good experience and that those of, those of us as staff are doing everything that we can do to support you. And so, we've, as staff members, started to talk about a few projects, one of which is, we're calling the Unified Bylaws Project, and I think that might be something you're talking about tonight. But, but basically, the goal is to make sure that we have some consistency in our bylaws across our boards and commissions. Now, we do recognize, actually, that the Planning Commission is somewhat unique because of the quasi-judicial nature of some of the work that you do, and you also have the most fully-developed bylaws at this point in time, so we'll be sort of just, when we get further along, sort of checking ours against yours and seeing if we can add to what it is you already have. Another item that we're working on is a survey that we're hoping to get out to all of our board and commission members next month to sort of assess how, how your experience has been and what we might be able to do to further assist you. And then lastly, we're going to be talking about training and how we can bring new board and commissioners, commissioners onboard and make sure, again, that they've got the tools that they need right from the get-go. So, that's just a little bit about what we're working on. I did want to take a minute and update you on one other item that I'm going to be assisting with, which is neighborhood associations, and that was a topic that our council talked about on October 4th and expressed support for the formation of neighborhood associations here in the city of Edina, and I think they're really looking specifically at the St. Louis Park model. And so, key to that model is actually looking where neighborhood boundaries might be, and so, the council has recommended that we form an advisory committee to kind of talk about what that process might look like for establishing those neighborhood boundaries, and then people within those neighborhoods would have the opportunity to form associations if they so chose, and that would be a way of strengthening both connections within the community and then also providing sort of a communication channel for both the residents to hear about what's going on that might impact them, but then also for us to be able to get their input into important decisions. And so, I wanted to make you aware of that. I know that our Planning Commission has got a lot of important projects right now, but I'll certainly let Carrie know when we get closer to forming that advisory group, and I'll let the chair know, and if, and if any of you would be interested in participating in that, we'd be delighted to have you join.
Thank you. Commissioner Stotan?
I can just, Karen, our experience with the Grandview Project is an illustration of how that would be helpful. You know, if we had, one of the things we wrestle with is, is communicating what we're planning to do and trying to reach out to our community and our residents and make sure they're aware of efforts that we have underway to, that we want their input on, and if there were smaller groups that might, that might help in this communication to folks about what we're doing, and so I look forward to your work on that.
Thank you.
Anyone have a question or comment for our Assistant City Manager? I think in general, we have a good experience here.
I'm glad to hear that, and I look forward to working with you.
At least I do. Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
I've had the pleasure of meeting with Karen on one or two occasions, and for those of you who haven't met her, I think we've made a great selection in Karen for our Assistant City Manager, and welcome. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much for coming to us. The next item, speaking of bylaws, is Planning Commission bylaws, Commissioner Carpenter. We're going to do that.
Thanks, Chair Grable. What you have in your packet is both a clean and a redline copy of proposed changes to the bylaws, the purpose of which was simply to bring the current bylaws as previously adopted by the commission in conformity with some of the recent changes to the city ordinance, dealing in particular with resetting the calendar for when commission meetings are held, and also recognizing that going forward, the city council is requiring by ordinance approval of the bylaws of, I think, all of the commissions and other groups, approval by the city council. So, right now, what you see in the packet, section four for regular meetings has simply been revised to show the new schedule for those meetings as currently reflected in ordinance. And then lastly, the only other change has been to add a approval line at the end of the bylaws for approval by the city council whenever they would choose to take this up for action on their part.
I would note for the record that the bylaws were originally developed by a very blue-collar, not blue-collar, blue-ribbon committee. Blue-collar as well. Over, over, over several breakfast meetings.
Many, many meetings.
Many, many meetings.
Many high-level meetings.
Commissioner Carpenter took the lead on that, and I think did a fine job. We patterned our bylaws after recommendations provided by the League of Minnesota Cities, and, and so with that, we adopted these bylaws. And as noted, since we've changed the meeting schedule, we do need to make some amendments to these, so that's, that's what this is all about. So, with that, if, I would take a motion to approve the, to approve the amendments and to pass this on to the city council with a recommendation.
I don't have to do findings for that motion, do I?
No findings.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with the thanks of the commission to Commissioner Carpenter for his work on the bylaws. The next item under reports and recommendations is lot division at 5023 and 5025 Nob Hill Road in Edina. Carrie?
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. As a result of our, not meeting on the 26th, we did have one other item that was scheduled for that evening. It was a lot division. It's one of these simple shifting of a lot line in between properties, and these requests don't require a public hearing, so we thought we would put this on the agenda for this evening so as not to slow this one down, so we can move it on to the city council at their first meeting in November. So, this property is, there's two properties located at 5023 and 5025 Nob Hill Road. It's just west of Highway 100 and south of 66th Street. Nob Hill Road, as you see, ends in a cul-de-sac. There's a wetland to the left in this property, these areas in here contain some pretty severe The, this is the properties that we're looking at. There is an existing home located on the south lot, and it encroaches over the lot to the north. The property owner owns both of these properties, and they would like to sell one of the properties. So, what they'd like to do is shift that lot line to the north so as to eliminate that encroachment. Here's a closer look, you can see the existing home that encroaches over the existing lot line. So, the proposal is to shift that lot line 32 feet to the north. Both lots, as a result, as, as they exist today and as proposed, meet all of our minimum median lot size, lot width, lot depth, and lot area requirements. So, this is what the lots look like today, and with the shift, it just shifts that to the north. The southern lot gets, gets quite a bit larger, but again, both lots do meet all of our minimum standards. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of this lot division, subject to the findings and conditions. They're outlined in the staff memo that was handed out this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Platter?
Carrie, do you know when you, when you adjust the property line like that, does that take away access to the pond and back?
It would not. Both lots would continue to, well, let's see, with the shifting of that lot to the north, it may be a little more difficult for that northern lot to access the pond without possibly trespassing. It's hard to tell.
That's what I'm curious about, does it set up the situation where people are going to want to get to that pond and, in the new lot, and I guess that's by beware, but still, is there, is there an issue with that? I don't, I don't know the answer, but...
It would just be the individual property owners. It's nothing that, that the city would have to require. Again, both of these lots would continue to meet all of our minimum standards.
Based on the topography of those lots, I'm not sure they're going to access the pond anyway. It's, falls off pretty, pretty steep back there.
Yeah, there's some really severe slopes here. There's a reason that the lot to the north and to the south are vacant today. I think the slopes are a big reason for that.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Shearer?
Just so I understand the situation, especially in contrast to others that we might have considered in the past, these have, despite the placement of this house, these have been owned and taxed as two separate lots. They were never combined, so that's why we're not considering subdivision.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? Commissioner Carpenter?
When you talk, well, just ask it this way, the, as I look at the, the encroaching portion of the house that encroaches onto the northerly lot, and if the line is drawn where the proposed lot line is drawn, is the side yard setback requirement in conformity then?
It would.
Okay.
It would come into compliance rate.
All right.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Other questions? Seeing done, do we have a motion?
So moved, move approval of the lot line rearrangement per the recommendations in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion on this motion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The lot line move of Agenda 2011-012-11A is approved. Moving on to correspondence and petitions, you have the council connection in your packet. Chair and commission member comments, I would reiterate that, that we did have our meeting with the, with the Planning Commission members of the cities of Richfield and Bloomington last week. We've been doing this now for five years anyway. It's Edina's turn to host next year, and I, I always find the meetings to be extremely informative and interesting, hearing what's going on in the different cities and learning how they do things, and it's just a great opportunity, I think, to build some, some consensus around things and to learn what's going on. Helps us here, and hopefully, our experience helps the cities of Bloomington and Richfield. Other comments from the commission members? Okay, comments from staff?
Nope, none for me.
Okay, I would just remind everyone that the meeting of the, the next scheduled meeting of the commission is now November 6th?
9th.
9th, excuse me. We have canceled the meeting of the 26th. Please take advantage of that time to participate with the small area study. Recommend that to the members of the public. Thank you to Karen Kurt for being here tonight. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1732.23]